So, without further ado, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming and welcome all the new commissioners, the commissioners that have been with us for some time. And I especially want to thank the staff for coming out on a Saturday, for being able to present some things that I think that a lot of us, old and new commissioners, need to be told in terms of what happens inside of the authority every day, in terms of operations. You know, who is in charge of what department? Who is the person that you need to know is taking care of certain things? So that you're not put in a position to have to answer questions that are really not ours to answer. And I respect the fact that we have some professionals who've been really holding it down for the Housing Authority for years. And for that, we are in good stead with HUD. And that is a great accomplishment. You've got some great scores. We have some very professional people. I trust them. And as you get to know them, you will come to trust them as well. One of the main things I want you to know also is that HUD has provided that housing authorities put money aside for commissioners to be trained. So that if they have knowledge about certain things, they can better make decisions when it comes down to voting for things, when we have our meetings. So that you're not in the dark and wondering, "Well, how did this come about? How does that come about?" You'll have an inside way of knowing how these things actually happen.
The way that we've arranged the agenda for the day so that it's not so overwhelming is we're going to have the key staff involved with one unit come up and they're going to do a presentation. That hopefully is going to give you some of the data and facts that you need to understand. I'll ask you that while they're presenting, that you go ahead and jot all your questions on the packet that you have. And at the end of that piece, we'll take questions for that specific section. I think that's the easy way to make it all clear. I think my experience of working with housing authorities is this is a very complicated business model. And so we want to make sure that we break it into sort of bite-sized chunks. Okay, so what we're going to do for introductions, it's going to be fun. You know, I expect it to be fun. And we're going to get you moving a little bit. So I'd ask if you took your mask off to eat, that you go ahead and put it back on now. Because we are going to interact with each other for a second. So I want you to imagine your life when you were 18-years-old. I know, come on, do it, it's going to be fun, right? Okay, so what you're going to do is you're going to pick one or all of these prompts. So thinking back to your 18-year-old self, I'm going to read them out loud also. Thinking back to your 18-year-old self. "I wanted to be..." "I wanted to be a lawyer when I was 18." "I wore..." So that will occasionally age us a little bit. "I wore Doc Martens when I was 18." "And I did." So anything that you did. So you don't have to answer all of them, you can pick one. Hopefully, they give you enough room. So what we're going to do is we're going to use that to introduce ourselves. So you're going to say your name. You're going to say how long you've been on the board. One less than a sentence about your day job. Because today is not about your day job. Today is about your Saturday job. And then you can pick one of these prompts. So I'm going to pass the mic around while we do this with the sanitizer. So this is the sanitizer. So after somebody speaks, you're just going to roll it around. So I'm going to let you start.
"I wanted to be an anchor woman on the community."
"When I was 18, I wanted to design boilers. And then I took physics in college and realized that I was never going to design boilers."
"I wanted to be a roof teacher." "I had no idea what I wanted to be at 18. I just wanted to be grown, keep money, and get off the house."
"When I was 18, I just wanted to be 21 so I could drink." "I finally achieved that goal. And I went to law school and am now a retired attorney. I do some work with the state, working with some of their real estate projects. And in this role, what they did..."
"I wore bell-bottomed pants and platform shoes. And I wore an Afro." "It's not that funny. Because I've got kids now and the hair went with them. And there's no way in the world I'm going to tell you all what I did." "I wore a lot of Chuck Taylor tennis shoes. And like Commissioner Kessler, I did a lot of partying when I was 18."
So I like that question because I think we get all of these little whispers of everybody's personality a little bit. All right, so what I'm encouraging you to do as we walk through the day is as a question comes to you with a section, jot it down. After that section, we have 15 minutes of questions. I'll let it go longer if we need it. Because the key is everybody walks out and understands how RHA works and what is the role of each of the pieces in the whole part. Okay? Great. All right, I think I'm passing it to... Yeah? Ms. Stacy. Sorry, Ms. Danielle Stacey.
Whatever, I can do whatever.
Hello, hello, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome morning. It's...I'm so excited to be here with you all. It's good to see folks in person instead of video. I started working at RHA in February 2007. So I've been here for a long time. And that shows that I am committed to the organization. And I'm happy to have the opportunity to be in the role of the interim CEO. That gives me a greater insight and the chance to have a greater impact on our families that we serve in our communities. And I'm going to stress our families, I'm going to stress our communities because that's the reason we're here. If we didn't have families to serve, we wouldn't have a Housing Authority. We wouldn't have staff, we wouldn't have the commissioners here. And we do have to understand that our common goal is to help our families. Even though we do have, we know we have stakeholders, we have the city, we have our various partners, and we have various customers that we do serve. Teamwork makes the dream work. I know my staff may get tired of hearing me say that, but it's absolutely true. And I see that us with the staff as well as commissioners as we work collaboratively on the many challenges that faces our organization. Just an overview of RHA. I'm not going to go through all of the information because everyone can read. We were established in 1940 by the Richmond City Council. That's important, 1940. So that should be able to tell you how old some of our housing communities are. Our largest community is Gilton, that's 781 units. And that's by far the oldest community that we have. And we are the largest housing authority in the state of Virginia, serving nearly 10,000 families. We have over 4,000 families in our public housing community as well as 3,000 participants that we serve in our Housing Choice Voucher Program. We are a high performer as it relates to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Ms. Kenyatta Green will talk about that housing program and why we're a high performer. As for our low-income public housing, we are a standard performer. And Charles will discuss that in more detail. In terms of agency goals and accomplishments for the public low-income housing, our short-term goal is to stabilize our housing projects. I know that our vision and our goal is to redevelop our communities, but we know that's going to take a while. So we do have to make sure that we're able to maintain safe and decent and affordable housing for our residents and our families. We need to continue to implement preventative maintenance programs. Just given the age of our stock and our facilities, it's a challenge. Just because we may have had communities that were built in the '50s. So you still have HVAC systems, maybe boilers that were built during that time. And it's a challenge to have to repair those items because there may not be parts that are available. And we want to further augment our staff. When we look at the challenges of our housing stock in terms of maintenance, the level of work orders, being able to turn units, we do look at standards in terms of for our maintenance staff, how many units that they're able to serve. And that's on average roughly 50 to 6 units for per maintenance person. And Mr. Williams here, who's the director of public housing, can correct me if I'm not correct. In terms of... Okay? You're zooming. You're going a little bit too fast. Oh damn, just a little bit. Okay. For LIPH Resident Services grant awards, HUD awards us an annual capital grant to help with improvements for our communities. And this year, we were awarded, when I say this year, we were awarded a 2020 grant for 11.5 million. And in the last past two years, HUD has awarded us 11.2 and 11.1 million. And prior to that, HUD was awarding us on average anywhere from about 5.6 million to about 6.5 million in annual capital grants. And we do use the capital grants to help with water repairs, sanitary drain lines. And one of the issues that we have had challenges with in many of our communities are the sanitary drain lines. Tiana Woodbridge, as you see here, who's an internal controller, when we go through the budget process, that's one of the common themes that we hear. And on a monthly basis, we do look at our utility costs. And our utility costs, even though the city continues to raise the rates, but we've seen our utility costs increase exponentially. And that's because we have those types of issues that we have addressed. And we have been addressing, and we have seen in some of our communities where the utility costs has dropped. In terms of furnishings within our units, the capital funds are used for replacing the stoves and refrigerators, electrical infrastructure, bathrooms, as well as kitchen repairs. So I just want to identify some of those, as well as roofing projects and roofing repairs. As I said, we have to be able to maintain our facilities. Just while we maintain our own homes, we have to have regular inspections of our HVAC systems. And we do that, we have a separate team. Joe Sarver here, who is our director of central maintenance. He will introduce himself and he'll talk about, a little bit about his team. But one of his team is the HVAC team. And they do primarily service our public housing units in terms of addressing water and HVAC issues. In terms of our families, Resident Services Director, Resident Services, Mr. Stuckey. He's waving. We received $717,750 for Resident Opportunities and Self-Sufficiency Ross Grant. And this is to promote and inform the self-sufficiency among public housing families. And this is critical and very important to Resident Services because this funding allows them to increase their capacity in terms of resources to be able to help our families. And as part of helping our families, that's providing resources for our families where to go to provide wraparound services. If it's training, if it's mental health, our Resident Services, our coordinators out there to direct our families and to help our families. And it's also critical as we move towards redevelopment because we do have to get our families ready for redevelopment. And what does that mean? Our families, we need to be able to teach them how to budget, how to be able to be self-sufficient, and to be able to manage their household so they can be sustained or sustainable. And then we are all waiting on a $100,000 grant for the city of Richmond for our case management system, which has already been implemented. And Ralph Stuckey will talk to that. The Housing Choice Voucher Program, as I indicated, Ms. Green, who's sitting over here in the corner, wait, wait, so everybody can see you, is responsible for the program. And our focus here is increasing the number of residents and tenants that we serve. Also, the Housing Choice Voucher Program supports the redevelopment efforts through issuance of property-based vouchers, as well as maintenance of tenant-protection vouchers. And this is going to be even more critical. Even though we're increasing the number of families that we're serving, one of the challenges, not just giving us under, that Ms. Green will talk about, is landlord participation. We have vouchers, we need to have landlords. And when we talk about where we are in the city, we need to be able to expand that out into the counties, Chesapeake, Heraco. So there may be opportunities for our residents. And as I indicated, it's critical once we move towards redevelopment, we'll have additional vouchers on top of our current authority. And our current authority is about 3,574 vouchers. So as we begin to redevelop our communities, we will receive additional vouchers. So landlord participation is critical for us. And just to highlight some activities for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, we have received five additional vouchers for the Virginia Support Housing Program, which is specifically for veterans, 15 additional vouchers for State's Rental Assistance Program, and 60 main-staying vouchers for homeless and elderly participants. Real estate and community development. This is our ultimate goal. Our ultimate goal is to redevelop our housing stock. And as a common among housing authorities nationwide, HUD will not be in support of additional capital needs for our housing over the next several years. So Desi? Where's Desi? Desi, right here. Desi busy at winter? No. That's a little inside joke, I'm not sure if he's going to tell that, but I had a good laugh and I'm smiling somebody's face. So as Desi gets in talking about a little bit about redevelopment, we'll go into more of some of the challenges there. Our redevelopment goal, and this is a critical goal for us in terms of how we want to redevelop, how do we strategize to redevelop our communities? We have to be able to retain the number of housing units as affordable housing units without recreating public housing. And do you understand what I'm saying here? So for example, we're in a process of redeveloping Creighton Court. Creighton Court has 504 units. So as we redevelop Creighton Court, we're looking at a third, a third, a third. And what we mean, a third of the units will be deeply affordable, which will help our residents. We have a third LITC units, and then a third that's market, market rate. So if you have a third of the units that's deeply affordable, and we know we're looking at roughly, the density will be about 666 units or 680 units. So roughly a third of that, 200 and something, will be deeply affordable. Where will the rest of our residents go? So those residents that are 30% of AMI. So part of our strategy has to be, we have to look at our inventory, those properties that we are holding that are non-HUD-related properties, and incorporate that into our strategies. Because we're just having a third of our residents that may come back to, go back to Creighton Court. But we have to be able to have housing to sustain the additional 200,000 or 300,000 residents that have to be housed. And so how can we do that thoughtfully and strategically? And that's not an issue that RHA itself, in terms of staff, where we need assistance from our commissioners to be able to support that, as well as our partners, the city of Richmond to help with our redevelopment efforts. And it's key that everyone understand that because advocates are asking for one-for-one replacement, and we're not doing one-for-one replacement. Because then if you're doing one-for-one replacement, you're rebuilding public housing. You're not diversifying your units. So I think that's a real critical discussion that we'll need to have and will have and as we begin to strategize. Because I know the city wants to have an understanding of what we can do within properties that we have, and what our strategies are going forward as it relates to our communities. But we know this is a long endeavor. And we have to be committed to making sure that we get there. We have a bond program, and Desi and Cory will talk a little bit about that. Just to highlight some of our accomplishments, the Fay Towers rental assistance demonstration conversion. That was a transfer assistance. Fay Towers had roughly 200 units. Fay Towers sits in the Gilton unit. We had approximately, I believe, 72 transferred to Howden Park, which was a redevelopment. We had the Jackson Ward Senior, where we had additional families to go to. And it's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful place. And one of the things that I highly suggest and recommend for all commissioners is to visit our communities and to really understand our redevelopments and what our units look like, what our boiler rooms look like. So that there's an understanding, you have that picture in your mind of our housing stock. And then as well as to visit our new communities. And we're on our third, you've heard of the transfer assistance, that's Baker School, and that's right down the street from 901. Armstrong Renaissance, we just had a ground, not a groundbreaking, but a dedication ceremony. The homes there are just absolutely beautiful. We have a home ownership program. And we partner with Project Homes, Habitat for Humanity, and others to renovate and sell homes in our standard sites. Just a little bit about our workforce, some of our workforce demographics. We have a total number of 192 employees. We have a mature workforce because you can see here, our average age is 51. And our workforce is diverse. As you can see here in our generation brand, look at millennials, Generation X, and baby boomers. And that, not necessarily presents a challenge, but given those different generations, you know, we know the millennials, they like things done now, quickly. And when we're tracking or trying to hire employees, we have to take a look at whether or not they will come to our agency. What can we really offer them in terms of a millennial versus a Generation X? Baby boomers, your typical baby boomers are long-term committed employees. Your millennials may not be. They may move from place to place. So we have to look at how we advertise and present our employees from that perspective. And the other thing that I want to comment on this page, one of the challenges that we do have when we look at our housing stock, when we talk about some of our facilities and the technology that is in place, is old. When we're looking to hire HVAC and maintenance staff, they're being trained and taught on new technology. So how do you feel that gap between old technology versus the new technology? And so one of the things that we have been discussing is developing an apprentice program, where you hire staff, young maintenance personnel, and have them to be trained on our current facilities. And that's how you close the gap. And I also want to indicate that we are preparing our employees for change. We know a change is going to come, and it's going to come soon. And that change is going from where we are to redevelopment. And that requires a different type, not necessarily a different type of employee, but a different type of maybe skill sets. So we have been training our employees. Several property managers have been trained for tax credit. I've gone through tax credit training, as well as Ms. Woodbridge. Our maintenance staff has gone through several maintenance training programs within the last year. And there's ongoing training. As Commissioner Brown indicated to you all as commissioners to participate in training, we're encouraging our staff to do the same as well. How do our divisions work together? Holistically, hopefully. We don't have any silos. We're trying to break down the silos within our organization. Because working in silos don't work. We have to work hand-in-hand. We have to be collaborative. That's why I say teamwork makes the dream work. And the core of our business is our residents. And then you'll see the wraparound services, or the divisions that provide a direct impact, and then overall agency support. And one of the things to be mindful, this is where we are now in terms of how our divisions work together. But as we move towards redevelopment, this paradigm is going to change a little bit. And what I mean by that, as we redevelop, when we look at residents, we probably think of public housing residents. But that is going to shift as we redevelop. We have vouchers out there, and our residents will become our participants in our Housing Choice Voucher Program. And then we have to look at, you know, how we're structured organizationally and see if that would need to change as we redevelop.
When we talk about the maintenance and boiler system, do we work collaboratively with the Technical Center and J. Sergeant Reynolds, who have these kind of programs and bring them in as partners to help train our younger people?
I can have Ms. Ingram, our director of human resources. She handles a lot of the training as it relates to some of our employees, as well as Joe Sarver, our central maintenance staff. I don't know if we have worked directly with J. Sergeant Reynolds, but I know we have done outreach to other entities to assist us with supplying us maintenance staff. But Ingram can speak to that for you.
Commissioner Johnson, one of the challenges we are facing is that we still have old boiler systems. Even our new boilers that we put in place align with older systems. And in the current schools, they spend maybe a class or two, one day, on the types of systems that we have. And they're learning the new technology. And so that has been a huge challenge. We really have to tap into the prisons, the school systems, to find people that know and can marry our boiler systems with the new technology. Stacy mentioned the millennial gap. We actually brought someone in that had come with a new certification. And one of the struggles that we're finding is that we are a very traditional workforce in that we expect you to come in, you've got to be here at 7:30, we need you to work overtime. And that has been more of a challenge for us with some of the younger people that we have coming in. But if you see the chart, there is a U shape. We are really trying our hardest to bring in people that are 18 to 24 and develop them. And Joe is even open to that. And we started that about a year ago, trying to bring them in. But yes, we have reached out to the Technical Center. We've reached out to the other schools. The challenge is, technology has passed its thot, to be honest with you. They're using control systems, they're using different systems. And we have to have people that can work with the very old, but also implement some of the new things and maintain this. And so that has been our challenge.
Good morning, I'm Ingram Brown. I'm the director of human resources. I like several of my peers in McLauren. This is my second time working for RHA. Also like my peers, I was recruited out of the Midwest. I came from Akron, Ohio to work for the Housing Authority. Kenyatta over there.
We've got...
I live Detroit. We've got another Midwesterner. And I was recruited after working for the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company for 21 years. I started on the technical side at the degree income engineering community at University of Virginia. I worked for Goodyear for 21 years. I started in safety, health, industrial hygiene. And Gilton Court has always been a very special place for me. I'm on the Board of Strategies to Elevate People, which is staff. And we are a nonprofit that supports the Gilton Court community. And so one of the reasons why I came back the second time was I had unfinished work at the Housing Authority. We needed to transform HR processes to ones that were virtual. So in the last year and a half, we introduced a new payroll system, new recruiting system, new time and attendance system. Our employment files now are virtual. They are online as opposed to being paper files. And so that is one of the reasons why. I recognize there was additional work that I had not completed when I was here the first time. So when I was given the opportunity to come back to a community that I love, and I love Gilton Court, and my family made sure that I loved Gilton Court. And so I'm excited to be supporting the commissioners. I will be helping you select the, I don't have a voice, I simply do the administrative work for the next CEO. And it's with the pleasure that I serve you. If you need any assistance, feel free to reach out to me. I usually always reach out to both the chair... I usually always reach out to both the Chair and the CEO when I am supporting the commissioners, so they're on the same page as well. But I just want you to know that I'm here to support you, and I'm excited about it.
Well, good morning again. My name is Angela Fountain, and I am the Director of Communications and Public Relations. And I have been with the Authority now for a little less than a year. So I came here actually back in November of twenty nineteen, and am really, really happy that I did. I, I came from the city of Richmond, where I served for about thirteen years, also in a communications role. And I just, you know, one of the, one of the reasons why I came here to the Authority is that I asked myself, I was, I was very concerned about, I've always wanted to be a part of the solution. I always wanted to be on the right side of helping and enhancing and uplifting my community. And so the question that I asked myself was, how can I do that with my skills, abilities, knowledge? And that is by doing what I do best, which is provide information. Because for me, everything is about communication. Everything is about information. With the right information, people can make the right choices. With the right information, people can, you know, make the right decisions that's going to affect not only their lives, but the lives of the people that they're connected with. And so I wanted to be a part of the, you know, the, the work that gives people the, the information that they need to make the right decisions, to give the stakeholders and our partners and our vendors, you know, information that perhaps is misunderstood or mischaracterized. I want to tell our story. And so that's why I'm here at the Housing Authority, because we have a wonderful story to tell. And so, so yeah, so that's why I'm here. Just really quick about some of the things that we, you know, we were working on. We, we have, we've worked very, very diligently with a campaign for COVID. Hopefully some of you have seen our, the things that we put out in our communities about social distancing, about the repayment program. One of the things, campaigns that we're working on right now in conjunction with our Resident Services and Low-Income Public Housing Divisions is about no mask, no service. And that was to address some concerns of our employees. So we have, we know that there is a lot of work to be done, and we are up for the challenge.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jackie Hicks. I'm the News Director at the Housing Authority. I'm the Director of Information Technology. I'll put this down a little bit so I can breathe. I hail from Wessensale, North Carolina, and have a degree in Information Systems and Operations Management from the University of North Carolina at Groomsburg. I have been with the Agency for twenty-seven years. Yes, I did start at the young age of three. And many people ask me, why have I been with the Agency so long? And this is my why. My family, my dad's family grew up in Kibbleley Park Housing Projects in Wessensale, North Carolina. It has since been revitalized via the HOPE Six Program. And I watched my aunts and my cousins use the services provided by the city and the Housing Authority to go to community college, to go to college, to go to Wake Forest Memorial Grace School of Medicine to get certifications, go on to use programs in place to buy homes. I have a cousin who's purchased like nine rental properties, and they work in very lucrative jobs at this point. So that's my why. The Housing Authority's mission is something that's very dear to me because that mission also applied to my family and how they got out of the housing projects. My cousin Gregory always says, just because he grew up in housing projects, that was not his final destination.
Thank you, Jerry. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, everyone. As my slide says, I'm Joe Starver. I served here as Director of Maintenance. I have eighteen years of experience in the Central Maintenance Division at RHA, serving here in two tenures, most recently returning to the Agency in December of twenty eighteen. After working in the private sector as a GM for a technology contractor for nearly eleven years, I came back to RHA. I am a Richmond native, growing up in the city and what we used to call the Benedictine area. Nowadays, they refer to it as the museum district. But, you know, pretty much a lifelong city resident. I will tell you, as an aside here, my earliest encounter with the Housing Authority was as a young child. My, I lost my mother when I was eight years old, and my dad worked three jobs. So after my mother passed away, my dad had to enlist the services of a housekeeper. Well, as a favorite habit, the housekeeper was actually a resident of Gilpin Court. She lived on Cherry Street, right across from the central office. So I, she, in effect, helped raise my sister from, from age eight on. And some of the memories I have of that is, once I became of dropping age, I used to have to bring, her name is Maude Hassel. I would bring Maude home in the evenings after she had worked all day at our house and can drop her off at Cherry Street at her apartment. And that was in the early seventies. And of course, back then, Cherry Street was, it was very pristine. I have real fond memories of her living situation in Gilpin Court back in those days. But anyhow, way back then, I graduated from BCU. I think like Commissioner, or part of the mission earlier, I was a physics major. But I have worked in an engineering capacity for my entire career. For lack of a better term, I'm a little bit of a triple threat in that I have worked as a private consulting engineer for consulting engineering pharmacy in Richmond, and as a contractor in several different private sector businesses, usually in technology, technology-type contracting.
Okay, good morning, everybody. My name is Kiana Wildridge. I am serving in the role as the Engine Controller for the Housing Authority. I've been with RHA a little over six years now. I truly feel like I've been blessed or, and I'm humbled in my talent as a student position. I started here as a temp through Robert Hatt, then was hired full-time as a, just a staff accountant, then just, you know, through hard work dedication. And I have to say my intelligence and commitment, you know, just to finish to get through the position as a controller. My background is, I have a Business Administration degree at the Avery University. Then got my accounting certificate from BCU. I am also currently pursuing my TPA license. Which is very challenging, but I will get there. My goal is.
Yes, you will, you will.
By next year. So I am working towards it, I will get there.
It's nice to see everyone in person. I'm RHA's General Counsel, which means I head up the Legal Department along with my Deputy Minister Ben Titter, who couldn't join us today, unfortunately. And if you go to the app, you'll see the big, long list of, first of all, that is just the worst picture of me that has ever happened. I promise I have a chin underneath. That's the big, long list of things that Legal is responsible for. But the bottom line is, me and Ben are just a tiny little law firm that's housed in the Agency, and our clients are the folks in this room. A little bit about myself, I'm from Elizabeth City, North Carolina. If any of you have ever been to Elizabeth City, North Carolina, you will understand, one of my first goals was to leave Elizabeth City, North Carolina, which I did when I went to UNC Chapel Hill to get my bachelor's and later my Juris Doctor from law school. A double tar deal. Hope you don't hold that against me. I've been practicing law now for about six years. I got my start in the city attorney's office in the city of Danville, Virginia, where I fell in love with public service. Had a brief stint in a private real estate firm, just long enough to know I didn't want to handle private clients. I think Neil can probably sympathize a bit. And that brings me to the Agency here. I've been here for about, since two thousand and eighteen, and I just, I really enjoy working with everybody. Couple super lawyery things before we get started. I am counsel to the Agency, not its individual officers or employees. That means I cannot give you personal legal advice. And that also means my duty of confidence is to the Agency and not to any individual members. And that includes, you know, myself, of course. Second thing is, most of my presentation is, excuse me, our mask keeps slipping. Most of my presentation is pretty much going to be legal advice. So I just want on the record that probably most of this is going to be exempt from FOIA if we ever get a request for this presentation. Anyway, one of my key jobs is to inform you about your rights and duties and obligations as commissioners. So I wanted to cover a few topics that are going to be important for you during your jobs. The first thing I want you to know about is the public meeting rule. So the Virginia Freedom of Information Act says that whenever three of you meet together to discuss public business, that is a meeting within the meaning of the law, and that meeting has to be public. That means it has to be noticed in advance, and the public has to have the right to attend and participate. If we do not do that, if three of you meet to discuss public business and we didn't observe those rules, the meeting is illegal. And I'll tell you more about what that means later. Public business is kind of an open term. We know it doesn't include trainings like this where specific RHA business items aren't discussed. But it definitely includes things like board meetings where you're voting on specific RHA business transactions or policies. There's a lot of gray area in between. So if there's ever a question about what you can and can't discuss with the rest of the team, please check with Legal if you're able. Go to the next slide. What this means pretty practically is, it's best if you avoid unscheduled meetings with more than two of your colleagues. If you do happen to bump into each other, try to avoid, try to avoid discussing RHA business at all. If you're not able to do that, try to at least avoid discussing individual business items, or the specific business items of the Agency. This means, this rule does include things like group chats, text message chains, video conferences. Any simultaneous form of communication is covered over this rule. So that's not a way to get around it.
Email.
Email, yes. So a group email chain would be considered simultaneous. If you do meet in violation of this rule, any action that you take in that meeting could be nullified. And there are penalties, civil penalties, for up to two thousand dollars for the first violation, and up to five thousand for the second violation. And that is personal to the officers who commit the violation. I'll go ahead and say that includes me, too. So if I ever give you bad advice, I could be fined. So I hope you know you can trust me. There is an exception to the closed meeting, excuse me, to the public meeting rule for closed meetings. Closed meetings are authorized for very specific, narrow topics. They include things like personnel matters that involve a specific employee or candidate. So you can interview a CEO candidate in a closed meeting without the public observing. It includes discussion of legal matters, so I can give you an update about ending litigation in a closed meeting. Or negotiations of certain kind of business or real estate contracts where if we discuss it publicly, it might harm the Agency's negotiating posture. You have to make a special motion at a public meeting in advance of the closed session. And in doing that, you have to announce the specific topics that you are going to discuss in the closed session. For that reason, it's really best if we plan closed sessions in advance, so I can help you prepare that special motion, go over what you are and are not able to talk about. And I know Commissioner Jones always does me the favor of reading the long motion that I prepare, so it is a little bit of work. In the meeting, like I said, you can only discuss the specific topics you said you were going to. At the end of the meeting, you have to go back in the public session and vote to certify that you only discussed those topics. And of course, you cannot take formal action like voting to pass a resolution in a closed meeting. Penalties for violating that rule are the same as the public meeting rule. Something else that's important to your work is disclosure of records under the Freedom of Information Act. Since we're a public agency, we have to disclose on request any of our public records. A public record is pretty much anything you can think of. It's writings, it's documents, it's emails, it's video recordings, it's audio recordings. It will be the video recording of this presentation, as long as it concerns public business. That word from a couple of slides ago, where we weren't quite sure what it means. For, it's construed a little more broadly in the context of disclosure of records. It applies wherever the record exists. So on my RHA-owned laptop's hard drive, or if I'm discussing public business in my personal email or on my personal phone, it could include my personal device. That does happen. A couple of years ago, the mayor of Chicago was forced to turn over his personal cell phone in a FOIA case in that state. That's kind of the nightmare scenario. But it's best to limit sensitive discussions about RHA business from your personal devices and personal accounts to the greatest extent you can. And also have those conversations verbally if this topic would be too sensitive for a record to exist. Penalties are essentially the same as the public meeting and closed meeting rules, except in addition, there could be a fine of one hundred dollars for each record that an officer destroys or hides to get around this rule. There are also a bunch of exceptions, things that we don't have to disclose. So if you're wondering whether you can or should discuss a piece of RHA information with a member of the public, be good to check with Legal first, so we can give you some advice. Now we get to the really spooky stuff, which is conflicts of interest. You are all officers of a public body, which means that you are subject to the Virginia State and Local Government Conflicts of Interest Rules. Generally speaking, that law prohibits two broad kinds of conduct. It prohibits you to accept anything of value in exchange for the performance of your duties. A good example of that is in the second bullet point, if you were to accept a gift or a favor in exchange for a vote to direct a public contract a certain way, that would be a clear violation. It also prohibits you from participating in a business transaction or authorizing an RHA contract if you have a personal interest in that transaction. So a personal interest in the transaction could be anything. It normally relates to, essentially, if you or a member of your family or somebody who pays you a salary or wages can stand to benefit from a decision you make, you have a personal interest in that transaction, financially benefit more specifically. Again, there's not a lot of clarity in the law about this, so if you are concerned about an issue, please, I encourage you to come to me. I always wanted to mention as well, the Virginia Conflicts of Interest Rules apply to every single RHA transaction. There's a second body of conflicts of interest for all law we worry about called the Annual Contributions Contract. That's the contract that we have with HUD, and it lets them give us the money we use to operate. And that prohibits any officer of the governing body to participate in a transaction or contract if they have a quote-unquote "interest" in the transaction. I note that it is, doesn't say financial interest. It is intentionally very broad. HUD drafted it that way to make us, to encourage us to go to them for assistance or advice when we are concerned about a conflict. I interpret this very broadly, I know Art does as well. This rule applies more specifically to money that the Agency spends for its HUD-assisted programs, public housing, Housing Choice voucher program, et cetera. And it does, it applies to dispositions of real estate that are, that are basically governed by the Declaration of Trust. So the, those properties that HUD has an interest in. This extends for one year after the officer has left the Agency. So if you have a conflict that prohibits the Agency from entering into a contract, even if you resign, we still will not be able to enter into that contract for a year. So what should you do if you are worried that you have a personal interest in a transaction? Please come to me. I'm not scary, I will not send you to. I will not send you to jail. I will help you and I will try to find the best way to get you to where you'd like to be. If the ACC Conflicts of Interest Rule applies to this transaction, I have to advise the agency that they cannot enter into that contract. If it's a contract that already exists, I will probably advise Stacy to cancel it to the greatest extent that we can. We also would have to disclose that conflict to HUD immediately. I will be the first to tell you. I will be among the first to go to HUD because I enjoy working with all of you very much, but I will risk my law license for nobody. So abstaining, even resigning won't cure that conflict and I'll advise Stacy not to sign the contract. If it's something that just the Virginia rule applies to, so that would be a disposition of non-HUD real estate or some use of our defederalized dollars, you can still participate in, well, you can participate in the contract, but the agency could still enter into the contract. You would have to abstain from any vote on that subject. You would have to publicly announce the nature of the conflict at a public meeting. Generally, that just means you have to say, "I'm conflicted out because of a business interest in X company," or "I own, you know, part of this certain real estate." And now that I'm sure I have spooked you all, I just wanted to say, like I said, me and Ben are super friendly. We want to make the agency work as smoothly as possible. I know you share that goal. Please feel comfortable to come to us with any questions or concerns you have. I'm happy to help and I'm happy to find a way to get you where you need to be.
I am Helena Trotter. I'm your Housing Compliance Officer. I've been with RHA for 26 years. However, my experience with RHA began a lot earlier than that. The summer before my ninth grade year, my mom had to make the choice and she accepted an apartment in open court. So that's where I spent my high school years. As well as my college years. I too, Commissioner Kessler, am a TJ Viking. So it is the best school in the city. I agree with you on that. I went on to the University of Virginia and obtained a bachelor's degree in Butterfield Communication Studies. I have also obtained a master's degree from Virginia State University and am currently in my position as compliance officer with the agency. And in that role, it basically entails that I ensure that the agency is compliant in the emissions of our housing programs as it relates to fair housing. Fair housing is not an option. It is the law. As a housing agency, that is the foundation of RHA's business. And that goes across many and most of our departments, from procurement to tenant selection, applications, housing trust voucher program, resident services. So I am that person that's always asking questions and making sure that we're in compliance. The goal is to operate all of our housing programs in line with civil rights laws, their housing laws, and any amendments federally, on the federal level, state level, and local level. We must ensure that in our practices, in our housing and non-housing programs, we do not discriminate against any protected class. And you will find that the Virginia Fair Housing Law is actually broader than the federal Fair Housing Law and that it includes elderlyness as a protected class, as well as a recent protection of source of funds that just, was just voted into law July 1st of this year. So we keep all of that in mind in our everyday operations. We also enforce the provisions of the Violence Against Women's Act, VAWA for short, which offers protections to male or female victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual stalking, or stalking. Our grievance processes are as follows. From, actually from marketing, we have to make sure that, you know, we have fair housing in place in our marketing of any of our housing and programs and things of that nature. As far as our grievance processes are concerned, it starts in application. If a person applies to any of our wait lists and for any reason they are denied, they have the right to request an informal review of that decision. If a person is a housing trust voucher participant, there's an informal appeal hearing in place for persons who may be facing termination of their housing assistance or violation of family obligations that are outlined in our administrative plan. There is a ten grievance procedure in place for our public housing residents. And that procedure is in place for our residents to dispute any action or failure to act by RHA. That ten grievance procedure has two components, basically. They may request an informal conference first with their property manager. They discuss the matter. Any grounds for requesting grievances in accordance with the dwelling lease and HUD regulations and our emissions and community occupancy policy. If at that request for an informal conference, the resident does not feel satisfied with the outcome, then they have the right to go to the next step in the process, which is to request a formal grievance hearing, which I, as hearing officer, will coordinate. That formal grievance hearing can be heard before just the hearing officer solely, or a three-person hearing panel. That's up to the resident's choice. Thank you so very much. Next up, we have the quiet storm of procurement, Mr. Art Walker.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Art Walker. I'm the Director of Procurement. I've been at RHA for about 10 months now and I am another one of those Midwestern transplants. I, before coming here, I spent the first 25 years of my career at the Detroit Housing Commission, which is the largest public housing authority in the state of Michigan. And all that time was in various roles in procurement. My goal here is to extend that experience, make our contracting activities more efficient, and do what I can to create more value and stretch those contracting dollars. As you know, our resources are very limited, so we have to do what we can to make our programs run the way we want them to. What is procurement? So procurement includes the procuring, purchasing, leasing, or renting of goods, supplies, equipment, materials, construction, and maintenance and professional services. So, you know, it's a big statement, but generally what it means is that pretty much everything that we buy falls under the procurement umbrella. We spend approximately, or contract for approximately $10 to $15 million per year for our routine goods and services. And all of this activity is covered by the procurement policy, which was approved by the Board in July of 2019. That policy does include required federal regulations and state law. They make sure that we follow rules so that we do everything as we're supposed to, you know, under those extensive laws and regulations. For, one of the questions that I often get asked is how our contracting dollars can be used to help the broader community. So one of those ways is through compliance with Section 3. So this, Section 3 of the Housing and Redevelopment Act of 1968 is a federal regulation that applies to HUD-funded agencies like ours. It does require that we provide employment or job training opportunities through the expenditure of our federal funds. We require each of our service contractors to provide a plan for complying with Section 3 to provide those opportunities. There are three ways for contractors to comply. They can directly hire or train low-income persons. They can subcontract work to a Section 3 certified businesses, or they can become a certified Section 3 business. Certified Section 3 business is a business where 30% of that business's workers are low-income persons. And qualified contractors can self-certify and register on HUD's Section 3 Business Registry website. Our current goal is to expand 10% of our funds with certified Section 3 businesses. Another way that we try to impact the community is by doing business with minority businesses. So we do conduct periodically outreach with the minority business community to increase participation. As a matter of fact, we do have a virtual outreach scheduled for December 3rd to further that goal. Unfortunately, we are prohibited by regulation from providing bid preferences for minority firms. So even when we reach out to them, they do have to compete and be qualified and go all out like every other business does. So sometimes that presents, it could present a challenge, but you know, it is one of the things that, you know, we have to deal with in doing business with minority firms. We do have a goal of expanding 30% of our contracting dollars with minority businesses annually. So some of the challenges that we have with expanding the number of companies that we do business with include federal labor standards. For most of our construction contracts and large maintenance contracts, the contractors are required to pay prevailing wages or Davis Bacon, if you're familiar with it. So essentially that means the contractors have to pay, so a union scale to their workers and they have to report that information to us. And sometimes that acts as a disincentive and some companies don't want to do that and they decline to do business with us for that reason. Another issue that we'll run into is the perceived safety for the contractors. You know, our contractors being in the community, watch the news, they read the newspapers, you know, and they see the violence that happens in our community sometimes. And frankly, it scares them away from doing business with us. And you know, to the extent that we can improve safety, you know, for the families in our communities, we can improve the number of contractors that we do business with. And lastly, one of the things that we combat is our reputation, you know, as an agency. You know, like any other government organization, you know, people don't have a lot of trust in what we do. So it's incumbent upon us and we ask you commissioners as ambassadors in the community to let businesses know that we do want to do business with them, that all of our actions are done in strict accordance with rules and regulations. Their, our actions are fair and transparent and objective. And send them to us and they'll get an opportunity to do business with us. And you know, if they come to you with complaints about the way they've been treated, similarly, send them to us. We can explain why we've done what we've done and we can explain that we've been fair in doing things in accordance with the rules and regulations. And hopefully over time, that will improve our reputation in the community, drive more contractors to us, and it'll help us overall lower the cost of doing business for us. And that helps, it helps all of the families in our communities.
My name is Terry Walker, Theresa Walker. I am the knee baby of six kids. My father was a military guy in World War II, very bright guy, but up from the South, from Montgomery, Alabama, who found his way to Vienna, Austria. And there he met my mother. And the rest is history. So I take great pride in being a public servant. I came and hit the ground here and I told everybody here, "I am your public servant extraordinaire," right? And that's just a set of mindset that it is a noble and honorable profession that we are in, in spite of how people may perceive and think of us and relate to us. It is noble and a needed profession.
We had a full, comprehensive review of the agency when we walked in to understand where the gaps were in this agency. We began the process of filling some of those gaps. One in particular was with our procurement department. We brought someone in with over 30 years of experience at this. Where I have seen many pitfalls and I ended up being a receiver either for the entire agency or for programs within the agency, procurement has been one of those big things that I have seen be big pitfalls for the agency. So I'd love the opportunity to talk to you all as a group or talk to you and speak to you all one-on-one just about some of my experiences and some of those best practices that I thought was important for me to help this group with. Because that's what I do right now, right? They know what to do. Everyone knows how to do what they do. My role right now is just really to coach, really to provide some examples, help them come up with better ways and ideas to do the things that they do where we determine that there's a better way to do what we do. And then to find myself moving on to my, to my next location. So having said that and talking about my phenomenal team, because the entire team is phenomenal. They are. They have a great team of people who are willing to get in the community. Charles Williams is going to come up and talk to you about the heart and soul of what we do, which is the local public housing program that serves the residents. And then the future, come on here, Charles, of where we're going after that with the Section 8 program and our phenomenal Ms. Ken Yada. And then last but not least, I want to get into, I want to make sure that we don't, when we get, how important what Resident Services does. Because that was the other big gaping hole that we found when we got here, was that there was no money poured into Resident Services, that the department had basically been gutted for the most part, if not by money, but also by spirit. And then all those programs taken away. And one of the biggest complaints we had coming in was perception from the residents. And you can't control that without a strong Resident Services Department, a lot of commitment, focus, and activity in that department. So we funded that thing up and got over $700,000 from the government to help us to do that. So Charles, come on here.
Again, our Big Six are in various parts of the city. Four of our, five of our Big Six are on the North Side and then we have Hillside, which is on the South Side. Our challenges, our public housing challenges. The first one is our age and aging public housing stock. Every one of our Big Six properties are pre-1960. Pre-1960. When I came in the building, I did not see a pre-1970 automobile. And if you had seen one, it would have taken a lot of work, a lot of maintenance to have it running today. Our buildings have not had that. We have a lot of obsolete parts, very time-consuming repairs, again, 33,000 work orders annually. And our maintenance staff, for every, every maintenance personnel that we have, they're responsible for about 65 units. The HUD standard is about 50. Our guys are responsible for about 65. The need for redevelopment is well overdue. I think everyone has heard that and we all should be aware of that. Our capital needs, our infrastructure, our electrical, our mechanical, our boilers, our plumbing systems, they're all aged. The political climate. We just went through a presidential election. We had elections at the local level and the state level. They all can affect us. RHA has not evicted one resident as a result of non-payment of rent since November of 2019. We have not evicted one resident as a result of that. So how are housing authorities assessed? Well, we're assessed through the Public Housing Assessment System. And they look at four major areas: the physical, the financial, the management operations, and the capital fund. Then HUD says, "Hey, housing authority, we're going to give you a designation. We're going to give you a designation based on what we found from our assessment of your public housing department." To be a high performer, you have to score at least 90 or better. And you cannot score below 60 in any of the four categories. To be a standard performer, you have to score overall 60 and no less than 60 in any of the four categories. If you're a substandard performer, you have to score at least 60 overall, but you may score lower than 60 in one of the different categories. And to be a trouble performer is someone who has scored below 60 overall. What I want to say right here, RHA has maintained at least a standard performer status for the last five years. For the last five years.
I'm the Director of Resident Services and I've actually been here with the housing authority for some time. My experience is, I'm much younger than I appear, but I have 36 years in human services. And I came And I came actually, I hail from Arkansas. I tell everybody, I'm the youngest of eight kids. And I was just talking to Commissioner Bezos, and I grew up on a farm in Arkansas, 16 acres, and my great-grandfather purchased in 1918. And so I kind of, when I came into Virginia, I was running away from home. But actually, I didn't do much work on the farm. We lived in the city. We moved away from the farm when I was about five years old. And so, but I have fond memories of running through because we were cotton and soybean farmers. And I have fond memories of running through those fields as a child. So here I am, coming from a 16-acre farm, running every day, having fun, you know, leaving myself behind the barn. And they put him in a classroom to sit down and do the things that he did, and about 2 o'clock, they were calling my mother, "Come get him. He's not ready to sit down in the classroom." So actually, and you think about that, those in 1969, I would have been, I would have been labeled as hyperactive. Just because I would not sit down. But for five years, I ran rampant and wild on farm, rode horses, all the things. And just because of my environment, now you take him to a classroom, and I'm considered hyperactive. And that happens so much, we label our residents. And I think one of the crimes that, that happens so often in the city region and across the nation is that because I am black, because I am poor, you have low expectations of me. I don't have to pay my rent. I can't do, I want to. And so here, I'm a testimony to, all you have to do is give people opportunity and chances, and encourage, and love, right? It's fascinating to me because, you know, so many people are Christians, I consider myself a Christian, and we forget everything about the Bible. You know, we condemn folks, and, you know, I grew up in that church, it was hell and brimstone, and, you know, "You're going to go to hell, boy, with your sin." And all I could point to was get out of church so I could sin. But one of the things that I learned, that it says that, of all, of all things, love. We just love this young lady, and she graduated from ODU, she went to Howard Law School, and now she's in Atlanta working as an attorney. Through the whole SIX program, we had, we had, we had a young lady who moved to Gilpin. Her brother, her brother was schizophrenic, the mother couldn't work, and we just loved her. She went to Bailey University, graduated, got her PhD. She lives in Asia, working. You know, I can tell you story after story, because what we're here for, what our department is here for, we have some staff who just want to serve. They're out here sharing on Sunday, on Saturday morning. One, just serving, and every chance we get, is that we're here for the residents. And I think one of the things that's so important that we all want to do is have high expectations for our residents. Because the human potential and what we have in our community is phenomenal.
So again, my name is Kenyatta Green. I'm the Director of the Housing Choice Voucher Program and Tenor Selection Office, and was just recently added to the call center, so we didn't add that information on here. But first, I want to talk about our Tenor Selection Office. So this gives you an idea of our need. Do you see the numbers? And this is not clear, I mean, it's kind of small, but you have it in your packets. Do you see the need? We have 6,000 individuals on one waitlist. We have 7,000 individuals on one waitlist. And these are the individuals who are reaching out to our Tenor Selection Office about housing with RRHA. We don't have enough housing opportunities or housing units to house these individuals. We're getting a phone call through the Tenor Selection Office of numerous individuals, "I'm homeless, what can you do for me?" And if we could house them all, we absolutely would. But unfortunately, the opportunity is just not there. And so I thought it was important that you guys saw the 15-plus waiting list that we currently have. Because my staff, yes, we manage 15 current waitlists. And as we are redeveloping units, as we are bringing project-based vouchers online, that adds additional waitlists because they're all site-based. What is the Housing Choice Voucher Program? And so you can answer that question in a couple ways, what it is and what it is not. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is a major program funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide low-income housing for low-income, I'm sorry, to provide low-income families the opportunity to afford housing in the private market. So that means a family can get a single-family home and not necessarily have to go into low-income public housing to do so. They can partner with a landlord, because our landlords are our partners, and move wherever a landlord is willing to accept the voucher within our jurisdiction. It is not a bottomless funding pit that landlords think that participating in this program, you're able to receive the income and the money that you want for your unit. Of course, we all think that our units are stellar, and that if I can get for a one-bedroom $2,000, I'm going to ask it. But there are certain parameters that HUD put in place to ensure that we are providing a rent reasonableness, meaning it makes sense. And so I just want to show you, of the 145 points that is available, well, 150 if you count the deconcentration bonus. But of the 145 points, in 2018, we received 130 out of 145, 90%. Very first year, we were high performer. So every year, we want this number to go up. So the following year, they said, "Okay, Ms. Green, we're going to shut you up. We're going to do 135 out of 145," which increased us to 93%. And so my goal and a task that I have with the staff is, I want to, I want the deconcentration bonus points, but I want to be 145 out of 145. That's our ultimate goal. That shows that, you know, while now is showing that we are efficient and effective, but the ultimate goal is to show, I want to be 100% high performer. It's not that many in the nation, and RRHA will be one of them. That's one of our goals.
Interesting, I tell this story. My name is Desi, and my dad named me after Desidario Arenas, the Cuban actor. Interestingly enough, and I don't know if he did this on purpose or it was just simply coincidental, but Desi, his nickname, was born in 1917, the same year that the United States purchased the Virgin Islands from Denmark. So I don't, I don't know if he saw that history, I was like, "Hmm, I'm going to name him Desi." Because I was teasing that name my whole life. But I left St. Croix in '85 to pursue an education. And I hated school, I really did. But I loved athletics, and I excelled in track. But what happened was, because I hated school, I wasn't accepted to any colleges that I applied to. And I remember, indeed, I called it, when all my friends were accepted and they were going off, my mom was like, "You're 18, you're out of here." My guidance council principal came to me, put his arms around me and said, "If I can get you into a school, you go." I was like, "Sure." So he did. He came the next day, gave me an application, applied, and I went to a junior college in Connecticut. But for me, I loved track so much, I wanted to get back into it. So after a year, and it's amazing, because sometimes I rise to challenges, I did so bad in high school, but I knew I wanted to run track, that my grade point average from the junior college was a 3.45. You know, to this day, my mom teases me about that because, "You had the potential, why didn't you do it then?" But fast forward to James Madison, I ran track there. I did my undergraduate and graduate studies there, political science undergrad, public administration as a graduate, and I ran scholarship track there. Interestingly enough, and this is why you hear biscuit, I'm going to tell you the story behind biscuit. When I transferred, I was out of shape. Okay, I didn't have the track athleticism at the time, so I had to get myself back in shape. I was in the halls, stretching with my buddies, we're getting ready for a track workout, and I guess the assistant coach saw a little pouch, and he came over, "Look at that, that looks like a biscuit." So any of your track, my track buddies that you see, that's my, that's what they called me. You know, on Facebook, everything, "Biscuit, how you doing?" I tried to get rid of their name, but it doesn't work. But anyway, so, but that's a little bit about me.
Well, Desi, you're a world-class athlete. I mean, you're an Olympian.
I had the wonderful distinction of representing the Virgin Islands in the '88 Olympics and the '92 Olympics. It was an honor, I thoroughly enjoyed it. I'm spoiled by it, because I can't watch the opening ceremonies on television after you've been there and you see it. But it was, it was an absolute honor, and glad that I did it. Thank you. All right, let's talk about real estate. But how, how our real estate department makes the money is through our Bonding Authority, which Corey, at the end of my presentation, will come up and talk about that. We have two applications that we're going to bring into the Board, to the real estate meeting on Monday and the Board on Wednesday, yeah, Monday, Wednesday. And then we get developer fees from the various transactions that we do. I remember hearing Ms. Olds talk about this one time, and she was like, "Really, what we want to do is give families housing options, and that will lead to the deconcentration of public..." And I thought that was a very powerful thing that she said at that one time. We're about increasing the density of what we do, and that's really so that we can create a greater mixture, mixed-income community. I mean, that's the intent. If someone came knocking on my door and said that we're going to demolish, tear down, I mean, that's anxiety. And what we want to do is lessen the anxiety for all our families in terms of how we move forward with this transformation process. And that's why we're doing this Build For Strategy, is so that we can lessen that anxiety. Why are we redeveloping? You heard Charles. I love the analogy, Charles, regarding the car, because you're absolutely right. I just took my daughter car shopping for the third time, and she's been advancing the car each time. So from the first Honda that she had to now where she is, she's painted this herself, by the way, after taking her to car shopping. But he's, but absolutely right, you have to maintain that car. If you have a 1977 car, but you're using, the only way to keep that going is to maintain it. Redevelopment, what we want to do is basically get a new car, okay? Because the old car is historic, it has its useful life, but it's not in today's standard. I mean, I would love to drive where I don't have to mess with my phone and just, you know, Bluetooth and everything, but I don't have that capability. Our challenges for real estate. You heard Kenyatta talk about this earlier, the capacity to private rental market to absorb relocating families. We do know that, based on surveys that we've had with our families, that having a voucher is their number-one choice. Availability of land, Richmond is a landlocked community, and that's why it's so important that we utilize our existing land in order to do that Build For Strategy. Creating a mixed-income community in which the market area is already affordable, that's always a challenge. And then the resources, the financial resources in order to do this. The $1.3 billion that we talked about, that's going to be needed in order for us to do this.
All right, well, thank you so much for being here, Jay. It was my pleasure to help facilitate. And you guys, you guys now know the number-one person to call for all your questions. So you met all of them today. If you have a question about development, you know who to call. If you have a question about Resident Services, so I think that's the best thing over the many years of the multiple housing authorities that I've worked with. The best thing to do is just to seek the source and get the answer, because it's a really confusing model to anyone that doesn't live and breathe it. So, thank you. Any further last directions to anybody, except for, you know, grab your hand sanitizer and head home safely and wait in the back.